Sponsored by A Better Grapevine and moderated by our friends at the League of Women Voters. My name is Kathleen Thompson and I'm a co-founder of A Better Grapevine. We're a nonpartisan group of grapevine residents with diverse backgrounds and ages, united in our dedication to increasing accountability, stewardship, and transparency in our local government. Your city council has a big impact on your daily life. The council decides when you're going to water your lawn, what new restaurant can come to town, where stoplights will and won't be, and how emergency response teams are staffed, and much more. We hope what you hear tonight will help you choose the best person to make those decisions. Questions asked by our moderator, Georgia Kidwell, were compiled from many member submissions. We were told last year that of all the city council candidate questionnaires received, the A Better Grapevine survey was the most applicable to what actually happens at City Hall, and we hope you agree. We'd like to specifically thank the following folks to help us secure our location this evening. The all-volunteer A Better Grapevine Advisory Board, Kevin Mitchell, Director of Parks and Rec, who just walked in, Resident C.W. Higgins, Councilmember Chris Coy, Councilmember Def O'Dowd, I think you're being here tonight, Councilmember Darlene Free. The League of Women Voters' Moderator, Georgia Kidwell, will now introduce your candidates and explain the program and how there'll be timekeeping.
On behalf of the League of Women Voters of Tarrant County, I would like to welcome you to this candidate forum for Place One on the Grapevine City Council. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization which works to promote political responsibility through informed and active participation of all citizens in their government. The League does not support or oppose any political party or any candidate. The League puts on forums like this as a public service. Format for tonight is as follows: Each candidate will be given three minutes to make an opening statement. After the candidate's opening statement, the program will be open to questions. These questions, you will have one minute to answer these questions. Our timekeeper on the front row is Fran Fuller from the League. She will signal with a yellow card 30 seconds before your time is up, and with a red card when your time is up. Now I'd like to introduce the candidates. Mark Blum, Lee Durk, Christian Ross, and Paul Slipta. We'll start with the three-minute opening statements. Mr. Blum.
Thank you. Thank you, A Better Grapevine. Thank you, League of Women Voters, for having us. Can you hear me without the microphone?
No.
Okay.
Can you hear me, John?
Yes.
Okay. Again, thank you, ladies of the Women's League of Voters and A Better Grapevine for having this event. It gives us an opportunity to meet together as candidates for your expert and direct review. We appreciate the time to get in front of you. We try to get out all of your homes and neighborhoods and visit, but here's an excellent opportunity for you to see us up close. I am Mark Blum. I'm running for city council. Unfortunately, we had passing of our dear friend Shane Willbanks, who passed away, whom I was running against in May. Because of that, we have now this special election period, and because of that, I'm again running for city council. And the positions that I have are for lower taxes, fiscal responsibility, that means -- someone say something? Okay. Fiscal responsibility, which means looking at the budgets, looking at the way we purchase things, looking at how we do things, and making sure that we do things in a financially smart way. Additionally, transparency. We're all interested in being able to see every fact of the actions of our government, make sure that all things are in propriety, and we have quality services, and you have the ability to voice your opinion upon them. We have a wonderful staff currently, and we have a wonderful city council and mayor. It's also time for some younger folks like myself to get involved so that we will be able to take Grapevine forward, move it in a positive direction, which it has been all this time, and I believe I'm the person for that. Thank you very much. I believe my time is about up.
30 seconds left.
Oh, wow. I could never sit down, so.
You can sit down then.
Now we'll listen to Lee Durk.
Again, thank you for coming this evening. My family moved here in 1996. Right after I got here, I met Ron Emmerich, and I told him I'd been working on historic homes since I was a teenager. So I was fortunate to join the Historic Preservation Commission in 1998, and so I've been on that board almost 18 years. And that's how I found the best way I can contribute. And we meet once a month, and we just try to help the uniqueness of our city to maintain it. So I grew up in Arlington, and one of the things I always wasn't happy with in the 1970s, they went downtown and they wiped out whole blocks of historic buildings and put a city hall and a library. The first thing that struck me when I came to Grapevine was just how so much of Main Street was maintained. So what I'd like to bring to the council is just, I've been fortunate to live in Boston, Washington, D.C., Austin, Texas, building large projects, and I just think some of the things that we can improve on, there's not many, but some of the things we can improve on is just making our downtown a better place for the citizens that live around there. So if we could get the dry cleaners, get a small grocery store, get a drugstore back there, it sure helps with the livability and sustainability of that area of town. Some other things I'd like to have us do is increase the amount of bike lanes and nature trails, look at putting in a dog park, and I think that's what helps us keep young people coming to Grapevine. And I know that's for quality of life issues. That's our main job as a city council person, is to keep the quality of life up, and that's what I'm most excited about helping with. Part of my job is managing budgets. So back in 1989, I was working on a $36 million hotel in Leesburg, Virginia. So I was, I had to take $4 million out of the budget, so it took me about six months, but I did it. And just last year, I was working on the Tandy Center over in Fort Worth that was redone, so I was managing the portion between the two buildings and then the second tower. So on that second tower, I was able to cut like $1.4 million out of a $20 million construction building. So I think those are some of the skills I can bring to the city council, plus I care deeply about maintaining our historic history and for all the folks that come and join us. Thank you.
Well, now I hear from Christian Ross.
Good evening. Thank you for being here. Grapevine is a special place to me. It's a place where Melanie and I bought our first home together. It's where my boys have been born. It's where they go to school and they play baseball with their friends. It's a place where I've had the opportunity to take a one-man startup and grow that into a sustaining entity that now supports multiple families. It's a place that we've committed ourselves to worship and serve, and it's a place we call home. It's not a place that we call home by circumstance, though. It's a place that we call home intentionally and by choice. We made the decision to move here and to become residents, and I thank you for welcoming for that. Running for city council is not something I take lightly. I respect the foundation that's been laid by our previous leaders and our current leaders. We have top-notch schools. We have wonderful facilities. We have a high quality of life. We have high moral standards in this town, and we also have great property values. And I think most can agree to the fact that Grapevine truly is a place to raise families and a quality place to do so. Just because something is great, though, it doesn't necessarily mean that we can't make it better. There are a few things that I see. The median age in Grapevine is actually getting younger now, is in the mid-30s. We have more and more new and younger families moving to town, and I think that's fantastic. They see the quality of life that we have, the amenities that we have, and they want to be a part of that, and as they should. I do see an issue, though, is that as our median age is going down, our city council age is actually, the average age is going up, and that concerns me, that there might be a disconnect between our representatives and the people that are called to represent the local residents as well. And so my contention, my belief is that I'm up here because I want to be a voice for those who might be underrepresented now, the voice of the family, the ones with little ones like I have over here, somebody who knows when maybe the library hours aren't convenient, or when certain parks need help, or the activities that work for families and for kids that help to create a better community and a stronger bond among the residents. In addition to being the voice of Grapevine families, I also, I see that we need to diversify our tax base. I have some concerns. I love that we have such a great hotel tax base that we can, that we can work with, and we've had it for so long, and I applaud the leadership for setting that in motion. But I have concerns that what happens if one day another city comes in and outbuilds us and decides to attract away our tourists and our conventions, and I want us to be diversified in our tax base. I gotta hurry. With that, as a tech entrepreneur, I see that Grapevine has the ability and the potential to be at the forefront of technology in the next digital wave. To do so, I think we need to work on our infrastructure for technology. My office is on Northwest Highway right at Main Street, and quite frankly, we can't even get files to Internet there, and that would be a detriment to most high-tech companies. And so a vote for me is actually a vote for Grapevine future. It's one for families called home. It's where tourists return. I'm wrapping it up. I am the young boys and the new choice, and I hope to work together with you to keep Grapevine great.
Thank you. I was just saying.
Good evening. I'm Paul Slipta, and I am running for Grapevine City Council, Place One. Exactly five weeks ago today, I was at City Hall at 8:00 a.m. on the first day of filing. I wanted to be there when the doors opened. I wanted to be, and you asked why I wanted to file that day. I wanted everybody to know how serious I was about running for Grapevine City Council. Of course, once you file, it's a little intimidating. You start thinking to yourself, you know, "Am I the right choice? You know, will people believe in me? If I don't think I'm the right choice, then what, why are you going to think I'm the right choice?" So I started looking back over the years in Grapevine. I wanted to see if I had done enough for the community, and if I had the qualifications to ask the City of Grapevine residents to vote for me. And then I realized that the preparation for city council, you know, didn't begin the day I filed. It began 25 years ago, when I moved here straight out of college to work with my dad, who had just started a company here in Grapevine just a few years earlier. It's all the things that's happened in the last 25 years that have helped shape me in what I believe in and who I am. It's about how I am as a husband, you know, father of two, a business owner. It's about how I treat people with respect and listen to all sides before making decisions. As a business owner, I have to deal with different people all day, whether some are happy, some are upset, but the only way to deal with them is fair and honestly. The early years in Grapevine for me were pretty busy, you know, raising two young children, being a newlywed, starting, you know, a pretty new company. Fast forward to right now, you know, I have a daughter that's a sophomore in college, a son that's a sophomore in high school, and Panda Embroidery, my company's been in Grapevine for over 27 years. I've served in leadership roles on boards that promote economic development, in boards that promote tourism. I flipped hamburgers for the Grapevine Ambucks on Main Street. You know, I've served corndogs for the Chamber of Commerce. You name it, I put flags out for the Grapevine Rotary. So bottom line is, community matters to me, and I feel like the last 25 years have prepared me to take this next step. I feel that I'm young enough but experienced enough to add value to the Grapevine City Council. I may not always agree with you, but I'll always listen to you, and that's why I'm asking for your support.
Now we'll open with the questions. First question, "How will you encourage members of our community to become more involved in municipal affairs?" Mr. Slipta.
I currently think that, you know, that the city does a good, provides good resources and opportunities for the residents to find information on what's going on, but it is up to the resident to find that information and get involved and inquire about things they're interested in. If you're interested in the Parks Department, go sit in on a Parks meeting. Historic Preservation, go to one of, these are all meetings that are open to the public. Of course, if I'm elected, I'll do, I'll do anything I can to help guide that individual to get more involved in the community.
Mr. Ross.
Well, I believe that all of us go through different seasons in life. I know that there was a time in life where I couldn't sit on this stage because I needed to be at home supporting my family and being with my boys, and I truly believe that we all go through different seasons, and sometimes we can be involved, and sometimes we need to step back and take a break from being involved. I think for people to feel involved, I feel like they have to be connected and feel a connection to each other. I think the city's done a decent job of providing things like that. We've got fireworks, we've got library offerings, we've got butterfly flutterby type things where families can get involved, but I think we could do more. The ability to form relationships with each other creates that connection, the bonds, things like the fire department, the police department, open houses. We can connect with residents there, and once they do feel connected, they will get more involved. It's much more than, to me, you need to get out and vote, that's your civic duty. I think once you create a family environment for folks to feel connected, they will get involved.
Mr. Durk.
So when I was trying to prepare for this question, I just went on the city's website. So right now, we have 12 wards and commissions, and there's about 88 spots for people to be involved, and some of those spots are city council people. But there's four openings right now. So every two years, I have to reapply for my spot on the Historic Preservation Commission. And this past year, I was late getting in, and I got, I got some calls, you know. So it's, the staff for the city is very supportive. Shane Willbanks was very supportive of our group and a great mentor to us. And I think also, you know, we have opportunities at the library, at the senior center, the festivals. There's lots of opportunity for involvement, and people just have to plug in. Thank you.
Mr. Blum.
Grapevine is great. It's got a lot of people that really want to get involved, but we need more. And one of the challenges is, we all have to work to make money to keep our lovely houses in Grapevine, and that's the challenge of some of our younger folks. Our older folks have been able to retire well into this community and get involved because they have the time to. It's hard to make it available for families with young children, single mothers, single fathers with children. All these challenges make it difficult for a lot of people in this day and age to get involved with the local community. And it's very important that we help out them to help us. So I ask, help me, help you. Thank you.
Our next question, "Do you support video recording of council workshops and meetings?" Let's start with Mr. Ross.
I absolutely do. I think that it's important. I know that on a number of occasions that I wouldn't be able to get out to city council meetings, but the opportunity to be able to watch them online after the fact, or even live stream, is important. The Texas State Legislature passed a law this year requiring cities of a certain size to do that now, and I believe we fall in Grapevine right underneath that level, but I think it's important for us as, as a city government and as city council to still provide that. I know that if I'm elected to city council, I will continue to vote for that because I know it's not a mandated measure, and I will continue to support it. I think citizens have the right to know not only what decisions are made, but why they're made and how they're done, and so I would continue to vote for that.
Mr. Durk.
I think, I wouldn't wear the lack of transparency, but I know sometimes I get frustrated with the directions the city council is going. So as far as having meetings that are closed, I'd like those to be recorded or opened up or allowed citizens in there.
Mr. Blum.
Thank you. There are certain items that the city has to deal with that have to be closed, legal issues, special interests that cannot be released to the public as of yet. We should all recognize that and understand that's the only item that we should be allowing city council and our planning and zoning departments to keep as a closed shop. But everything else should be open to us, to be recorded, and make sure that everybody has that opportunity to see what's going on in city council. Because you folks have come out here, thank you, but some folks at home, they're going to get the opportunity because we've recorded this, and that's why it's important that you get to see the real thing, what's happening, is a whole different than what's on a piece of paper.
Mr. Slipta.
Yes, I agree with the other three gentlemen. Normally, I'm able to attend the council and workshops, but on occasion, I like to go back and re-watch it to see if I actually saw what I saw, or if I happen to not be there, I'm able to, I'm able to watch it, or you can go back. So I'm definitely in favor of videotaping workshops, P&amp;Z, but I understand what Mr. Blum said, there are certain times where we cannot videotape, and I agree with that.
Our next question, "Do you support the current policy of council reimbursements without receipts?" Mr. Durk.
Well, I think whenever I've had expense council business, I've never had a problem with providing receipts, and I feel that's something fair, that in a way, you're kind of a city employee. It's important that the city knows where you're spending tax dollars, so I think it's important that we do that.
Mr. Blum.
Went back and checked the city budgets and looked at the numbers, and last year, or year 2014, $63,000 was spent on those expenditures by all seven of our city council and mayor. None of the information was listed. So if you spent $63,000 and didn't tell your significant other, what would they say?
Mr. Slipta.
I don't really know what to say after that. I didn't really know that this was a real issue. I mean, I feel confident that the City of Grapevine and the staff are following all state rules in regards to, you know, council reimbursements. I don't think there's anybody up here that is doing this for the money, so.
Mr. Ross.
I know in my business, I have to be held accountable for the things that I spend and the things that I receive from my clients, from my employees, and that kind of stuff. And I wouldn't support any kind of reimbursement for myself that I couldn't be accountable to, to be able to have receipts for things spent. And so taking reimbursements that I can't account for is not something I'm open to doing, and I can't imagine that anybody on the council should be or could be allowed to do that, as a matter of fact, anyways.
Our next question, "Would you pledge to return all constituent emails and phone calls, even if you disagree with the residents? Why should a young Grapevine voter choose you?" Let's start with Mr. Blum.
Thank you. Okay, so email, fax, tweet, Twitter, whatever, Instagram, you can send me a selfie, I don't care. I'll respond back to you, whatever. However, it may not be what you want to hear, but I will do my best to answer your questions, respond to your suggestions, and bring those issues to address if we can find the right group that it needs to go to. Because sometimes questions are a little bit more technical, especially of the things that you're going to be asked. Now, why should a person from, be voting for me? Well, I went through the budget, as I said. Can you believe in the budget, I found a section that said that they put out $2,500 for two cell phones and service for one year. That's in your budget. Maybe we should read it a little bit.
Mr. Slipta.
As a business owner, I know how important communication is. I will commit to follow that same practice with Grapevine residents and Grapevine business owners, whether we agree or disagree. So yes, I will follow that practice. Why should young Grapevine voters vote, choose me? Well, I hope that all voters choose me, both young and old. You know, I feel like I'm young enough to have fresh ideas, but old enough to have some life experiences. You know, we need to continue to grow Grapevine, but yes, we also need to preserve the heritage of Grapevine, and I think that I'm the right choice. Thank you.
Mr. Ross.
I would find it hard to believe any of us sat up here and said, "No, we won't be accessible," or returned phone calls or emails. I likewise would do that with all business contacts, with family, friends, everything else, and I welcome civil discussion, and so I would consider my door always open, my phone, my email, you know, that kind of stuff. In concern for why choosing me, I feel like I speak for younger generations and families. The Quality of Life Survey in March pointed out that park trails and the related lakeside amenities were some of the highest things for quality of life, and I think that we would, I would continue to put resources into that. As well as my background in technology, I think our city needs to be more technology-focused. We need to, we need to be able to provide transparency into our budget. We can do that through the website, through financial dashboards, and so I think that businesses and families would flock to a city that actually provided technology and put more effort into it.
Mr. Durk.
Well, I'm 54, but I see the world through 25-year-old eyes. I raise my children constantly because they behave too young. I think some things that I've experienced on the Historic Preservation Commission are, you know, I go to Austin a lot, my son goes to UT, and you know, some things that they have going on there that I'm excited about, and you know, having little airstream trailers around, a little park where you get food, and I've asked, "Hey, could we ever consider doing that?" And I was kind of shut down and said, "No, that's not fair to the people in fixed restaurants that are already here." But my opinion is, if you give some young people a way to start a new restaurant, they're going to put their farm restaurant here in town. So I'd like to see more trails, more bike access, just make it easier to get around.
Our next question, "What will you do to advance active transportation improvements, such as non-recreational cycling or walking to everyday destinations, and enhance walking and cycling facilities?" Mr. Slipta.
Okay, I think that the City of Grapevine itself is kind of spread out geographically, so I believe it might be hard to live in certain parts of town and get to Els, Bayes, it's only 100, but with humidity, it feels like 105. Now, trying riding to work, it's going to be all sweaty at work when you're trying to do business. It sounds great, but if it was Sacramento or San Jose in California where it's nice and cool, that would work. Here, most of us, that's not going to be the case. So most of what we're going to see in our town is recreational and exercise biking. And it's important that we have trails and spaces for them, and that our community respond by making sure that they follow the road laws in our cars to make it safer for them as well. But you know, there's only a few months of the year that riding to work would actually be feasible. Thank you.
Our next question, "How do you plan to diversify local How do you plan to diversify local tax revenue in the future from hotel motel retail to other industries? Mr. Ross.
As I opened with, I believe that updating and expanding our digital infrastructure is crucial. If we can't even get the simplest of internet on our Northwest Highway, how can we expect to attract businesses? I believe all businesses of the future and residents of the future are going to base their decision and choices on what kind of technology is available to them. As a tech entrepreneur, one of the things we've done at our office is we've opened a coworking space, and what that did is allow tables and desks for other small businesses to come in and find a space and be a part of a community. And so, we've had software teams, we've had satellites from larger corporations, we'd have small agencies. I've seen it work on a small scale. I think that if we revitalize Northwest Highway, we'll bring more high-tech focused companies and other businesses there, and I know it can work on a larger scale.
Mr. Dur.
Well, I think, I was able to build the Cisco Richardson Development Center up on Brenner Road and George Bush Highway. So, that project was 750,000 square feet. At our groundbreaking, I had a city council person from Richardson come up and tell me how excited he was about having all the bodies that were going to be coming down there. So, recently, the city was able to encourage Covina Tractor to come to town. What I'd like to see more of is if we can get more corporate headquarters to move to town, what we get is some pretty good salaries with a lot of disposable income. We'll be able to support them with the restaurants that we already here, if they'd like to move downtown, get a nice home. So, there's a lot of good benefits from having those kind of offices. If we can push that, I think we have enough service. Industry's already in town between the dealerships and the hotels.
Mr. Bloom.
Thank you. The money that comes from the Gaylord and the Gray Wolf Lodge and the other hotels that are in our community is very special. It's money that is very welcome, but we have it diversified in specific areas, and it's well documented where that money's go to. We can't just grab all of it and have it go to this project or that project. Most of it has to go back into development for the hotels, people to come to and visit Grapevine. So, we can do a lot of things differently. One of the things I'm looking at right now is the fact that, as you all know, the oil is down and very low. As a matter of fact, it's half its cost. Roadways need some work in the older communities, and I hope that the city council will be able to be considerate of those situations. Thank you.
Mr. Schlechter.
We don't have any more time. You've used up your 15 seconds.[804.12][804.12](Laughter).
I'm currently the chairman of the Grapevine Chamber of Commerce, and I was looking on their website, and I really feel that Grapevine has a pretty diverse base of companies already, whether it's Fortune 500, like GameStop, or, you know, small businesses like Black Tire. You talk about the hotel motel, that generates $20 million, but that goes into promoting tourism. But at the same time, that tourism promotes Grapevine Mills, which brings in roughly $11 million in sales tax, which then, basically, it just, one drives the other. The hotels drive the mills, the mills drives the restaurants, and I think what we have is working pretty good so far, but I do think we have a diverse base, and I'm going to stop right now.[853.66][853.66](Laughter).
Our next question. Do you support single-member districts versus at-large city council districts? Let's start with Mr. Dur.
I think, I've seen over Dallas, some diverse, or some, that can create some adverse relationships. And I think our town is small enough that we should be able to get each one of the city council people to represent all of the cities of Grapevine. But there may be groups in the city that don't feel like they're represented, so I propose we just quit it for election. I don't think the current folks that are in there would like that or appreciate that, but I think we should let the voters decide.
Mr. Bloom.
The situation with going to a multi-district is delicate right now, because the city is large as it is, and it's diversified, and we have some physical anomalies with major freeways going across it in different sections. In some cases, that makes it seem where it would be necessary to have those individual places, and that's good. But we're not there yet. I mean, we only had 3,000 people come out to vote. I mean, that's not enough for the individual districts to make a difference. Can you imagine how much work and effort it is to get just those people out to vote? What we need is our population to get up, go tell their neighbor, go tell their friend, anybody in the city. You know, 10% of the people coming out to vote is terrible, and we need you to get out there and make a change. Thank you.
Good job. Mr. Schlechter.
I support the at-large city council districts. I mean, I agree that, I mean, we only have 50, there's 50,000 people in here, and as a city council member, I believe I can represent Hall Johnson, just like I can represent Mustang, just like I can represent Kimball or Park. That's just the way I look at it.
Mr. Ross.
I think this is a hot-button issue and one that I don't take very lightly. Proponents of single-member believe that all members of town will be represented and all will have a voice, while proponents of at-large believe that, you know, we give open access to all the city, that the city will make the right decision, and you get the choice to align with the candidate you see the most, seem to align the most with. My concern, and I don't have a decision on this yet, my concern is that too many cities have been sued over this, and what I don't want to see is our town end up in lawsuits or bad press over something like this. And so, I continue to do research into what would work best for all residents and not just me or the majority of residents or the folks that are in this room, because I think that we need a solution that works well for everybody. So, it's not one I take lightly, nor do I want to stop my research on and figure out what's the best solution for.
Our next question. Will you work to create an environment of transparency? Mr. Bloom.
Environment of transparency, absolutely. Transparency is the action of opening up our records in almost all cases. Again, we do, I did mention before that we have executive sessions, and there's going to be notes for those sessions that are going to be taken. This would, these items preclude things that will be happening in our neighborhood that can be adversely affected if the wrong people get a hold of that information. And because of such, there's got to be a little judiciousness in what we have open, and I'll stop there. Thank you.
Mr. Schlechter.
Yeah, of course. I believe in an open, honest city leadership and government. It's all about communication and the access to the information. So, anything that I could do to help with that would certainly be my goal if I was elected.
Mr. Ross.
Accountability integrity is important to me in my business, in my personal life, and I would continue that in a councilperson position. I don't take dealing with taxpayers' money lightly. I believe that it's important to you to know where your money's going and how it's accounted for. I know that the Texas Comptroller's Office offers an award every year to cities in Grapevine called the TC Leadership Award, and it's for governments who are the most open and accountable. I know Trophy Club has won it, and they have different levels, and I don't see why Grapevine shouldn't be and can't be awarded that. We haven't seen it yet. I'd love for us to get that platinum level, to get the award from the comptroller, to be the most open and accountable. I think that means we need to make available on our website, through financial dashboards, as I spoke of earlier, to be accountable by face-to-face or phone calls or emails. I believe open and honest government is the only way.
Our next question.
Well, I think it'd be the goal for all of us to be open and honest, and, you know, sometimes I've found on Historic Preservation, because we have the public meeting rules, that it makes it a little more difficult. But I'll be open and honest with anybody who wants to talk to me, and it's kind of, it's a great question. Thank you.[1238.54][1238.54](Laughter).
I already answered.
Okay. Our next question. Do you support term limits? Let's start with Mr. Ross.
Yeah, I don't have problems with term limits at any level of government, so, yeah. I would say additionally, I personally am going to limit my time at city council. I'm not a career politician. I want to give others the opportunity to get involved and to be a part. And additionally, I'd also like to see a more concerted effort at mentorship in our community, through programs like Leadership Grapevine at the Chamber, through other available options out there, that we mentor more folks and get more people into leadership roles through some of the boards that these guys are a part of. And, yeah, term limits, you know, yes, let's support term limits. At the same time, let's mentor those, so we have new people coming up ready to take their place.
Mr. Dur.
Well, I think, I've observed over the years that it is difficult for a new person to come to town and be an incumbent member of the city council. But we've also been blessed with some city council members that are dedicated to the city, that want to keep serving. So, again, I think this is something we should put to the vote. City of Grapevine, I think, will.
Mr. Bloom.
Thank you. The problem is, with the vote, you're not going to get that happening. So, we already did vote, unfortunately, and it was turned down significantly by monies that the people of our city put together against the term limits pact. I believe in term limits, I've always believed in term limits, I've said that from day one. It's great that we have such experience on our city council and our mayor, but it's time that we start looking afresh and anew. And I am that person that is willing to stick his neck out and be there for you. Thanks.
Mr. Schlechter.
I do understand why some people want term limits, and as Mark said, about two and a half years ago, we voted on this, and the residents voted against it. And, you know, I do support that decision. You know, it's corny, but they, you know, people say, "Well, term limits, we have elections," and then the vote decides. So, I'm not in favor of term limits.
Our next question. Recognizing that Grapevine is not completely built out, what do you want to see in Grapevine's population numbers in the next five to 10 years? Mr. Dur.
Well, I think, when I just look at the percentages, the average increase was 3.5%, and so, in five years, we'd be up around 60,000 people. So, and that's, I'd like to see more opportunities for affordable housing, homes that young couples can afford. And I think my main concern is just if we get too many apartments that are built in certain parts of town, then that's not good for the school district, and I'd like to see more affordable homes if we do have a kind of increase in residents.
Mr. Bloom.
Thank you. Grapevine is built out. There's not a whole lot of room left to build for new. So, given that, there's maybe 20,000 people that we could probably put in without having them underneath the flight patterns and stuff like that. We've got a new 714-person apartment complex that is going in around 360, is that right?
Turned down.
Turned down? Well, then, we don't have to worry about that thing.[1496.04][1496.04](Laughter). But eventually, these will go through. They may need tweets and whatever, but it's not what we want because it doesn't increase the values of Grapevine and the values that we define what we are, who we are, and how we are. So, I'd like to keep it where it is.
Mr. Schlechter.
You know, I don't anticipate that we can grow much more residentially, so, I mean, if I had to guess, I would put that number at maybe 5%. I do see where we're growing. We can grow, you know, with more commercial business, as we're talking about attracting more business that adds value to the community and benefits the citizens of Grapevine. You know, I do see, maybe in the historic district, you're going to see, you know, a lot of remodels, a lot of people buying older houses and remodeling, which will then increase the value of everybody else's home. But residentially, 5% maybe.
Mr. Ross.
I go back to a statement my dad told me long ago, that if you're not growing, you're dying, and so, I want to, you know, I want to continue that. I honestly, I believe, you know, like these guys, we don't have a lot of room to grow, and a 1% to 2% annual growth rate, to me, is fine. It should be expected, we should plan for growth, not just in a residential, but as Paul pointed out, that our commercial district, we need to work on. We all love Main Street. Main Street's awesome, it's great, the heritage, the tourism that goes there. I think we need to refocus our efforts next on Northwest Highway. I'd love to see revitalization there. I hate that it's a pass-through, that if people cross the bridge into South Lake, they stop at every, you know, every store along the way. And I'd love for us to put a little effort there on Northwest Highway to put more into it. I use "meet you anywhere" as an example. There was a ground-up build, it's a beautiful facility, and you can't go in there any time of day where there's not a line. So, I think growth is important, sustainable small growth over time.
What will you do to make the streets safer for all users, including pedestrians and cyclists? Let's start with Mr. Schlechter.
I read something recently that each year, 50 cyclists and 400 pedestrians are killed on Texas roads yearly. Now, of course, I think the city has done a good job with the signage, the crosswalks that we have on Main Street and on Dove, and I believe we're getting, we have another one on Main Street. Of course, the additional sidewalks. You know, as a member of city council, I would certainly take the input from the public safety departments and residents, you know, in regards to the safety of the pedestrians and cyclists in Grapevine. I mean, that is something very important to me. Thank you.
Mr. Ross.
We travel Dove frequently, and I love to see walkers and riders and runners out there for both recreation and for health purposes. I think the Quality of Life Survey showed that that's important to this town, that safety is important, and we want to take care of them. I grew up in a smaller town, and I was kind of perplexed when my wife and I moved to DFW years ago, how few sidewalks there actually are around here. And as a father, I do have concern that, you know, I want safety for my kids, I want safety for residents, I want safety that they can ride their bikes, they can walk to school and not have problems. I too want to follow recommendations of city employees. I know of times where city employees have recommended putting in streetlights where they're needed to help our kids, to help our traffic flow and that kind of stuff, and our council has shot that down, and I'd like to revisit those and lean upon our resources that we have to make quality decisions for the safety of our residents.
Mr. Dur.
I'd like to see us more scrapping, and I can go back to Austin. They've done a really good job of putting bike lanes all over town, and, but, you know, you do have to keep your head on the swivel, I mean, because there's bikes and walkers everywhere, so it's important. But I know just from personal experience, I got pulled over for running a stop sign on my street, and I went down to the city engineer and asked if they had ever done the survey of the stop sign, and he said no. So, I went to the municipal court and fought it two times, but the judge ended up finding. But if you can go to other towns, there's where they use the roundabouts and they use speed bumps or humps, there's other ways that we can move quicker through town that I'd like to see us look into.
Mr. Bloom.
Thank you. Safety's important, it really is, but it's our job as drivers, the people that are driving the two-ton vehicles. But it's our job as drivers, the people that are driving the two-ton vehicles, controlling them without a phone in their hand, coffee cup, slice of pizza. But it's important that we stay alert and look out for these bicyclists and walkers. They're the, we can't blame the city for this. It's the person behind the wheel who's distracted. And we have, in our school lanes, cell phone prohibited. Why isn't it for the whole city? Don't know. We'll check it out.
Now, it's time for our candidates to give their closing statements. Let's start with Paul Schlechter, please.
Day one or three?
One.
Okay. First, I would like to thank Kathleen and her group for putting this on, and I would like to thank the League Women Voters for moderating and doing such a good job of timing us. You know, hopefully tonight, you've learned a little bit more about me. I will be here for as long as you want afterwards if anybody has any questions for me. And again, I'm just asking for your vote. Thank you.
Christian Ross.
I echo Paul's sentiment and thank you. Thank you for taking your time this evening to be a part of this. Thank you for Better Grapevine, for putting this on. Thank you, Ms. Gloria and Fran, for being here and helping us. I think, as you can see and as you've probably seen, you've got four qualified people up here. And I applaud all of them. All three of you guys are putting your neck out there for taking a chance, for showing people that this is what it takes when you want to see something happen and see real change in your community. I hope that you would see out of me that I am a voice of families in Grapevine, that we do have young families that need representation. I'm also a voice that realizes that as we move forward, technology needs to change our city and to be a part of us. And a voice that transparency is smart in government, and we should all be open and accounted to. So if you have any questions, please feel free to find me. Come see me on Facebook or at votegrapevine.com. Thank you so much.
Lee Dur.
Well, something we haven't talked about is the train stations coming to town. And I think I've seen just in Historic Preservation Commission the large impact that's had on folks wanting to come in and put large homes. So I think that's, I've lived in some areas where I've used mass transportation. I think I have some ideas of how we can make sure that doesn't impact us too much. But I've got three children, 16, 19, and 21, and I'd like to make sure this town becomes a place that they want to move back to, and we can see some great kids running around. So long-term, that's my goal, is to make this the most livable town we can. Thank you.
Mark Bloom.
Thank you, everyone, for coming out. I really appreciate the opportunity to talk with each and every one of you. You've been a very wonderful audience, listening to us go on and on and get stopped by the moderator. But I believe that there are some things that we need to be addressing, and with your help, I can make a difference. I've been there three times. I am not afraid to get out and walk the streets to be voted in. I've been in front of you voters for four years. I know what's going on at city hall, and I can help you guys get a better city hall from it. Thank you.
Please help me thank these gentlemen for being so. I'd like to remind you that early voting is going to start on October 19th and will go on until the 30th, and that November 3rd is the election day. Also, over on the table, I have put our league voter's guide that is about the seven constitutional amendments that you will vote on that day, and some other league material. Thank you for coming, and I appreciate being here with you. Thank you, Kathleen.
Thank you all for attending tonight's forum. I know that there are a dozen other places that you could be. Thanks to Ms. Kidwell and the League Women Voters. I'd like to personally, on behalf of Better Grapevine, thank you, Mark, Lee, Christian, and Paul for being here and for running. I hope that you have all heard something tonight that helps you if you came in undecided. Like Ms. Kidwell said, you can early vote on Monday, and you can vote right here, right outside this door, so come back on Monday. A link to the video recording from tonight's forum will be available soon on our Facebook page, and our website is bettergrapevine.org for your friends and family who couldn't make it tonight. My son's waving from the back. So please get ready to vote. Thank you for coming, and good night.
can stop by either one of our membership desks, and we will take care of your.